We can ask him, I don't.
I'm gonna call the budget workshop for May 19th of 2022 to order. County manager, are you leading the show or?
I guess so.
There you go.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the Board. Are we on or are we off? Let's try again. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the Board and residents of Mojave County. I am pleased to have contributed and to present this budget plan to you. I believe this proposal or this proposed FY 2023 budget is both a reasonable and a responsible budget. It is a balanced budget for sure. It provides the Board with the flexibility to optimize available county resources and to deliver the necessary services to county residents. The proposed budget achieves the following. It anticipates continued growth in county revenues, recognizes the inflationary environment we are currently experiencing, including the increased costs in supplies, contracts, and equipments, along with the financial uncertainties and the potential for future economic downturn. It addresses the state mandated but unfunded services, reduces the county unfunded liabilities, primarily the PSPRS, and funds critically needed capital projects through a pay-as-you-go business model without incurring long-term debt. It also provides for employee recruitment and retention measures. So with that said, our FY 23 priorities are outlined in this budget, and they are: operationally, to receive the second tranche of ARPA funds of approximately $20 million and work diligently with the Board to allocate and distribute them, as well as continue to deliver ongoing and any newly ARPA-funded projects. Continue implementing the employee compensation strategy as approved by the Board in November 2021, just last year. Continue to update, invest in, and strengthen Mojave County cybersecurity strategies. Closely monitor and manage the expenditures of the Employee Benefit Trust Fund. On the capital project side, our priorities are to deliver the Law and Justice Center Phase II, complete the animal shelter, demolish the old jail, and initiate the construction of the Legal Services Center. Initiate the design of the reach-out, also known as the jail reentry facility, and advance it to construction. Additionally, and if funded by the Board in this year's budget as proposed by staff, to firm up the fairground and medical examiner facility site selection and advance the master planning process of it. Finally, continue pursuing available grant funding for transportation as well as water infrastructure projects and continue to work on delivering any already grant-funded projects. I'd like to end with: Mojave County employees across the board continue to be highly productive, efficient, and innovative. While shorthanded, they are keeping up and delivering services as well as carrying forward a significant capital investment, capital improvement program, probably one of the largest we've had in Mojave County. So I believe Mojave County employees are serving the county residents well. I am truly proud of and thankful for their efforts. Those comments conclude my remarks. I'll be happy to answer any questions related to them. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Coral Lloyd, our Financial Services Director, for an in-depth review and a presentation of the proposed FY 23 budget plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the county manager? Hearing none. Ms. Lloyd?
Good morning and thank you for all your time and dedication, efforts that you put in to the budget process and getting through today, as well as the future meetings where you will ultimately adopt a budget and the accompanying tax rates. I just wanted to start off by thanking everyone as well. We've got representation from the various departments and elected officials behind me, and I hope that they feel confident enough that if I mess anything up or misunderstand any of their initiatives and items that are very important and valuable to them, that they can, you know, give a signal and make their case for what area I have not covered or miscovered. And really hats off to the finance staff, particularly Sonia and Judy, who really did the lion's share of all the work to bring all of this together in a summary document that hopefully we can apprise you of very quickly. So to get started, I'm gonna skip through some of the first slides. Sam has covered those pretty eloquently with the purpose of the budget and the proposal for the projects themselves. The one point I guess that I would make is that for the one-time proposals in these projects is that we can essentially split them into our carryover projects from the prior year. And then the areas where we've increased the reserves are for the Legal Services Center and the County Morgue, where we've increased the County Morgue. We had set aside $2 million last year, and we would increase that by $3 million to get to $5 million, set aside for that future project. And then again, that's a repeat, but allocating $2.5 million for the outcome of the fairgrounds proposal. As Sam mentioned, we do have a proposal to pay down an additional $10 million of the Public Safety Retirement System. And that would be sourced from a loan from the landfill fund. What is proposed is that we would pool those monies with what we've already paid. We've already paid a million extra in a prior year. This current year, we will pay by the end of the year $3.5 million in additional funds. And then next year, provide an additional $10 million, bringing the total to almost $15 million, which would bring your unfunded liability down to about 13 and a funded ratio status somewhere in the range of 70%. At this point, I would like to leave the loan term, so to speak, fairly open and flexible so as to not put the general fund in a bind of having to pay this back immediately, particularly with concerns about an economic downturn coming in the next window of time. I think that we can do that. We would adhere to clearly the interest rate terms as what the landfill is currently making through the Treasurer's Office. The general fund would need to adhere to that. And ultimately, we would record this liability on our books that we owe the landfill fund. The general fund owes the landfill fund for this return. But it would certainly result in a reduction of the unfunded liability. I would estimate that the, again, the funded status would be somewhere in the range of 70%. Our goal would be to hit 80%. The current funded status is about 50%. And take a little break here for just a second. I will be bringing all this information back to you again in June, where you adopt your annual policy for paying down the PSPRS. But again, the contribution rate right now will be going to 55%. And we are budgeting now annually for just PSPRS about $3.8 million. So by reducing this unfunded liability, it could reduce the cost by more than $1.3 million annually and would bring that contribution rate down from about 55 to the 35% range, plus or minus. And I've talked with you before, so I know that this is not a new idea to you, but part of the reason that we had recommended only an 80% funding status was because the unfunded liability is based on an actuarial valuation, not real money, but what-if money. And so I saw a quote from the most recent actuarial report that I'm just gonna basically read to you to prove this. But in regard to our funded status and what we're paying into the contribution, the quote is that if, as of June 30, 2021, if the pension valuation results were based on the market value of the assets instead of the actuarial value of the assets, then the funded percentage would be 56% instead of 50, and the employer contribution requirement would be reduced down to 50% instead of 55%. So even by their own, their own report for us, PSPRS and actuarial is clearly stating that they know that there's at least a 5% margin between market value and the actuarial. And based upon the asset structure, it's probably a lot larger than that. There have been some improvements that they have made to the system from the actuarial basis, where PSPRS has reduced the expected interest rate earnings, and they've also extended the life expectancy of the eligible officers that are enrolled. And those two factors alone immediately change your unfunded liability and your contribution rate. So they're clearly making steps toward a better funded system, but there's a price to pay for that, and it would be in our best interest to utilize our own funds and pay as much as we can versus going out to the market. And as Chairman Gould pointed out in a prior conversation that the Board had, once you go to the market, you are officially putting a debt on your books. So that is a disadvantage of going to the market. The way that it is right now, we record this as a liability, not a debt, and there's a lot more flexibility with how we can address that then. So that's a little bit in the weeds, but it's an important topic. Moving on to our revenue projections. This is a fairly conservative projection. I built into this a 3% growth in state shared sales tax, which is a considerable source of revenue to the county. That is based upon what the state's revised estimate was, working with the JLBC. And the estimate that we've calculated is still $0.5 million less than the state estimate. So we've still stayed on the conservative side of that. So immediately, you know, I'm gonna predict that you have at least $0.5 million in flexibility just from one revenue source. The vehicle license tax projection is slightly less than the actual amount that we received in 2021, and it's almost $1 million less than the state estimate. And I feel very confident about that one because the VLT primarily is based upon results from two years ago. And so going forward, if we're careful right now, occasionally even the state makes some calculation errors. So if we're careful right now and take into account, okay, if this changes or if the economy changes in the future, we're already building into the budget that you're considering $1.5 million at this point less than what we should receive. And then maybe the most important component is that we're recommending to maintain the current property tax rates for all of the districts, the general fund, the library district, flood control, and the TV district. So the, all the calculations are hinged upon those primary factors. As Manager Elters mentioned, compensation, the implementation of the compensation package that the Board approved last fall really is kind of a primary focus of the budget. It's already been approved, but it's important to identify to you how we're intending to actually roll it out and the impact of that. So when we were implementing, went about considering the implementation of that, it became evident that what we attested to was that we would reduce the scale from 10 steps to about seven or eight. But by doing so, when you do the math, those steps were previously 5% apart, and reducing that now made them seven, more than 7% apart. Clearly, we recognize that 7% increases are not sustainable long-term and revise the approach to that, ultimately resulting in fewer steps than they scheduled previously had when divvied up two and a half at a time, but would still be from step one to 16 to get to the top of the scale in many of the positions. So using that philosophy, we've appropriated up to $2.5 million to transition to that scale and allow for this first year of employees becoming eligible to earn a 3% step advancement. It absolutely is not gonna cost $2.5 million. I can tell you that based upon the preliminary calculations. But true to form, I'm requesting that you allow me to keep a cushion in there as a contingency located in the General Administration. And inevitably, when we've brought a proposal to you that changed the scale, we've ended up with these unintended consequences pocketed here and there, and we've needed to request funds to fix those oddball items. And mostly, it's a mathematical change. And I also wanted to be very careful in case I miss somebody or we hired people at different rates between now and when their first evaluation would be rolled out. So I've got some extra money there as well. And then in the other funds, besides the general fund, again, they're all budgeted utilizing the same philosophy, but they will be sourced, for the most part, from fee funds or grant funds. There's a few exceptions. For example, the general fund transfers over about $1.4 million to the Public Health Department Administration nursing programs, which do not have grant funds for those. So there's a few funds that are like that. The senior, the senior programs, the county contributes, I think it's about $300,000, $400,000 to those programs. So we'll need to have some money from this $2.5 million set aside to enable the employees that are working in those programs the same opportunities. So that really concludes like the overall highlights. We've got one-time projects. We have the proposal to pay the PSPRS, and then compensation is a huge piece. Other than that, I just wanna cover the new initiatives. I hope by doing this, I know some of this is very redundant, but I feel like it's my responsibility, my job, to advise you of the primary points in the budget and point out anything that is different than it was in the prior year. I don't want any of you to not know what is in there or be taken aback by something that's asked of a constituent about a proposal that's in there and not have you aware of it. I don't expect you to read 1,500 pages of documents. That's our job. If I can overall capture in my time here, I was gonna say half an hour, but that wouldn't be true. My 45 minutes here capture the essence of what the departments have represented. That should be a pretty good summary overall of what you're faced with decision-making for next year. In years past, we approached the, look at the initiatives in a similar manner to allow those, if they were sourced independently, previously approved by the Board, necessary mandated, address deficiencies and those kinds of things. So to kick it off, the first department then that we cover will be the Sheriff's Office. It's clearly has the lion's share of the general fund budget. Their new request total about $1 million, which is split $740,000 with the general fund and the remaining amount with grant funds. Their new initiatives include adding six employees, which are three sworn positions, a crime scene analyst, and then two dispatchers. The primary reason that they're continuing to request positions that pretty much align with their strategic plan are based upon safety reasons that they, in large part, are noting that they have deputies that are on a shift solely by themselves and attending some calls that need at least two people. In the dispatch area, they are noting that they have increased call volume and need to cover all those and make sure that they're, have the time and the attention to capturing the information from the call so that they can relay that information to the deputies that are covering service for that. And the crime scene analyst position, similarly, increased work in that area, and they only have one crime scene analyst. So adding the second position is position number two for the crime scene analyst. When that person is out of the office or ill or things like that, then they have to do some other end around to cover those items. The Sheriff's Office also is requesting to move the employee-related expenses for the HIDA and Magnet grant positions back to the general fund due to a reduction in the grant funds. My understanding is that the cities have also had to do this, that the cities that are participating in this, that they have also had to go back and request their councils to approve bringing on the cost for the ERE into the general fund as it's, there's no longer the funding to support that. The equipment that they're requesting, I think that I've got that up there. I don't need to necessarily read all of that for you. It does have some attention, again, to safety and the concern for using the least amount of force that is reasonable during high-risk events with the multi-launchers that they would like to order. And they also would like to utilize the new technology for the DNA processing to solve cold cases. And I would imagine that you've seen some of that on television already where they've been able to, in other places, go back and solve some items. And the jail budget includes firearms and body armor and affiliated training for that for their officers that transport inmates to other counties or to court. Right now, they do not have that equipment, so they have included that. From the capital, this is all grant-related request, but includes an automatic license plate reader technology. Maybe one of the biggest items of importance is utilizing a school safety grant to purchase software and hardware that would enable the Sheriff's Office to have a connection directly into the Kingman area schools and the Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave, so county area schools. That connection would be direct during a critical incident at the schools, and they would be able to communicate immediately and directly without going through dispatch. And then they do have a request for $70,000 for a vehicle for the reentry program that would be utilized to take those participants that would be enrolled in the reentry program to appointments, to court, all the various functions that that department would then be responsible for in rolling out that program. You have a question at this point?
Supervisor Angus?
So these things that we just talked about, the capital, they're from grants? They are. They're all, okay. They are, all of those. Okay.
On the Magnet, where was that funding coming from before?
So I believe that there's been... Who do I get to blame? The court system. There were previously, when there were funds that were seized, so if somebody was stopped and they were able to obtain assets and cash.
So it's asset forfeiture then?
The what?
Asset forfeiture.
Yes, it is.
What happened to that money though?
As well as, there was that and the fines and fees. As well as, there was that and the fines and fees.
Good morning, Sheriff Gould and Supervisor Angus. Actually, those two, we have three positions in Magnet, all are Mojave County sworn deputy sheriffs. Two of those positions were paid from grant funding, one being the Burn Grant and the other being, I don't recall the name off the top of my head, but they're both state grants. The Burn Grant is the one that's affecting us now. They've reduced the amount of ERE that they will provide for. And so any forfeiture that comes in helps maintain the operation of Magnet, not the salary necessarily of Magnet.
So this is a reduction from the state?
It is, from the grant.
I wonder if they're heading in a new direction or...
It's very possible, sir. I don't know. It's something that if we don't pick it up, of course, then we're going to have to pull one of those deputies out of the Magnet unit and put them back on our side and come up with the funding for it.
Sure. I think this, I believe the state has a budget surplus.
Would you make a call for me and Tom that, please?
I probably should. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
You proceed.
Okay. The county attorney's office has about 256,000 in new initiatives. It includes three new positions, and a new attorney would essentially replace the attorney who was moved this fiscal year from their criminal division over to the civil division to handle the abatement enforcement. And then the office specialist position, one of them, would be supporting the attorney. And the other office position then would be assigned to the redaction group where they're reviewing the body camera images and performing the redaction, appropriate redaction. And they noted in our discussion of this that they're now covering five agencies, the three cities, the three primary cities, Bullhead, Havasu, Kingman, obviously the Sheriff's Office, and now the DPS in our area.
Do, do we get reimbursed for that redaction by the cities? No? Okay.
That is all I had for the county attorney's office. Going on to the courts, their net impact to the general fund was 185,000 this year and then about 300,000 in other funds. They would like to add two bailiff positions, particularly in, one in Bullhead and one in Havasu. Again, as we've discussed before in prior years, that's to comply with their security needs and the standards that were adopted by the AOC that we need to comply with. They would also like to reactivate a part-time judicial assistant, and then that person would serve as a floating position to provide coverage into each of the courts as needed. And the capital items that they have requested include a refresh of their technology equipment, and in particular, they have some improvements that are needed, again, in like Havasu and Bullhead facilities, and their normal annual server refresh. The initiatives for the Clerk of the Superior Court include, and this is going to be also for the Justice Court, but they need to implement new software. It's called the COFAX agility software, which allows and enhances public access to court services. They've included the cost to implement the software and then have recorded for you the annual ongoing cost for that. They would also like to unfreeze a court services position to assist in this venue where they have non-represented people that come to court, and they need, they're going to need assistance with this computer program that will be utilized to view the evidence and the case exhibits. So they've asked for that. They have their normal office equipment replacement for the technology. And the initiatives that they have are about 269,000, but solely sourced to other funds with no impact to the general fund. The probation division has some market adjustment requests. Many of the concerns that they had were actually resolved with the compensation that's been approved by the board with the dollar current year, a dollar next year, and an opportunity to advance people a step according to their evaluation. But they still had some that they would like attention to and approval for, which includes a market adjustment then for the juvenile court services deputy director and one of the deputy probation and surveillance officers. They would also like to join with the progressive job series opportunity that we've had, which would allow employee advancement after those employees reach milestones, training, knowledge, education, certification, competencies that are displayed. And doing these additional initiatives just for the market adjustments and the series is an impact of about $15,000 to the general fund, and then $53,000 in grant funds would cover those. They are also requesting a one-half position as a deputy probation officer senior that would oversee the adult recovery court sourced to grants, again, from the AOC. The juvenile detention division, and this is a general fund division for the most part. It proposes to eliminate an assistant, a teaching assistant position, and then replace it with an administrative position that would be able to assist with some additional data collection efforts and all the administrative functions that aren't really affiliated with a teaching position. And that is it for their area outside of some facilities improvements that will be covered later. The justice courts, they have a need to increase their judge pro temp cost to help cover for unplanned emergencies or illnesses of the justice of the peace. They're also going to need this for the current year. By and large, I'll give you a heads up that that's probably coming at the end of the year when we do. If we need to do a contingency transfer, then we would bring that forward to you at that time, and we would know what the cost would be. We may be able to transfer it between the various courts to cover that for the current year, but next year, our recommendation would be to go ahead and get ready for it and increase that. It's about, I think it was $40,000, $40,000, wasn't it? No, it was $10,000. It was a smaller amount, $10,000. Just like the clerk of the court, the justice courts need to implement the evidence management system, and similarly, that allows for the submission of the evidence and digital court proceedings. They are also requesting the general fund absorb up to $40,000 in court automation funds that were previously paid for in some of their enhancement funds. Those funds are declining, so if there are fewer cases that come before the judges or the fines are reduced or alternatives are provided for defendants besides fines, then revenue, not just general fund revenue, but the fee funds are also going to decline. And so there's an impact on those. They have to stay, you know, at least break even. And as those begin to dwindle, then we're, it's necessary basically to have that discussion with you and consider moving those over to the general fund. And that really summarizes the courts overall, and they have, obviously, a lot of divisions and a lot going on. So if you have any particular questions right now, we could do that, and otherwise, we can do this, do that later as well. But hopefully, I've covered all of the main highlights and items that they wanted reflected in the budget.
Any questions? Supervisor Johnson, you have any questions?
About at this time, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. So moving into the elected official, more of the administrative pieces, the recorder, assessor, and treasurer. The recorder would like to add a part-time position. They've had a significant increase in recording activity over the last few years. I hope that that continues in spite of some of the economic indications that there may be a slowing down to some degree. This would be budget neutral with costs covered by their department revenue. The assessor is asking for a couple of step adjustments, so it's similar to probation where most of the concerns that they had can be addressed through the proposal that's already been laid out and approved by the board. They did request that we have a couple of additional step adjustments for two of their very long-term employees for retention purposes. Those employees, to get to that point, requires a lot of experience, a lot of certification and training with Department of Revenue and other elements. And so that's important for them to not lose those people as opportunities arise in other counties as well. They were all experiencing similar issues, and occasionally, they will get tapped with a request to recruit in other counties. So that was the purpose for that. And they have a little bit of office equipment replacement. The treasurer, I actually, I believe that this is the correct accounting of this. They would like to reclassify an accounting position and then provide market adjustments for two of their other accounting staff. I had written it up in the message that it was three reclassifications, but it really is just one reclassification and two market adjustments. So they're noting, the reason for this in particular are those accounting staff are very critical and integral to the operations of a treasurer's department, and those folks perform some of the most complex tasks. They bring with them, generally speaking, a higher level of experience when they arrive on the job and then attend trainings and gain, clearly gain, knowledge by working here. And it's important, similarly, that it remains competitive with the other departments with financial people in them and remain competitive in the state of Arizona. The finance department, I put the finance department next since it was somewhat similar to the treasurer. The request this year is that we be allowed to add back the final two positions that were eliminated in 2014. At that point in time, finance department had 14 people. It was taken down to 10. We now have 12, and we would like to move back up to the, fully fund the 14 positions. The estimated cost for that is close to $150,000 a year. It should be budget neutral in future years when those costs are rolled out and recaptured through the central service charges. I mean, the county and our citizens end up paying for that cost one way or the other. It's just whether or not it's the general fund paying for it or another fund, and then, you know, through a citizen or a business, who pays for that one way or another. But we have some significant improvements we'd like to make, and this would help tremendously to put us in that positive direction. The elections department is requesting poll worker pay increases as well. This next budget year, they would budget for two elections, and the estimated cost then would be about $6,000 in total. The HR department would like to create the HR analyst job series, and that would not just be in the general fund, so that would be a split fund change with the EBT. And then they would like to transition their HR generalist to that series. The impact is about $1,000 in the general fund. The EBT would experience about $24,000. And then the department, as you're, I'm sure you're aware of this, is also proposing to do a, the new training pilot program for people with disabilities. And the estimated cost of rolling that program out is about $16,000. Procurement would like to create a procurement officer job series as well, and they also would like to add one additional position. By doing this, it would enable the department to take the current procurement technician and place that person into the full-time, the new full-time position. And then the vacated position is currently an office specialist, and that would be reduced down to an office assistant senior position and then open for recruitment. The department notes that it's been more than 15 years since they've had any additional positions. Their workload has clearly increased, particularly this last two years, and they need some additional help in light of the 30-some million-dollar projects that we have from the county-funded, combined with the $40 million in the ARPA, as well as all the items particularly that you have in public works area. The department is also requesting to do a one-step market adjustment for their procurement supervisor. And then in doing so, the total calculation for the cost is about $75,000 to the general In the public fiduciary's office, they face some challenges as well or some potential challenges. It takes about three years for their staff to become licensed. That's a requirement of the state. It takes quite a while. A great deal of time and energy is put into learning the roles that they have, working with the courts, and then becoming certified. So they would like to have four of their staff members that currently hold fiduciary licenses to receive a one-step market increase with an impact of $8,200, similar to some of the other departments or maybe all the departments, I'm not sure. But in this case, the other counties that have, they all have a public fiduciary department, and they are all searching for licensed fiduciaries. And so your Mojave, fine Mojave County employees are being tapped into for that too for recruitment purposes. And this would be with a design to help retain those employees and keep that knowledge and certification here. I've noted on your slide, I believe, and just to repeat, that this isn't, doing this change does not provide a windfall of money to these folks. It really just puts the positions on par with Yavapai County, and it would be below the lower level of Coconino County, and those are definitely competitors. In community services department, they would like to reclassify the administrative supervisor to an assistant director, and they've requested to add a file auditor position because of the growth and the need to have additional monitoring requirements. The audit position, as noted on your slide, would help deliver the required updates and ensure that even exiting participants are being reviewed and followed up with and measuring the success of those programs. And the cost for both of those initiatives is about $80,000, and it would not impact the general fund. They would be grant funded. Excuse me. A better voice than Monday, so charging along. The public health department has requests for range changes. They would like to move their nursing supervisors from a 20 to a 22, and their registered nurses from 18 to 20, and the impact of that is about $4,800 to the general fund. In 2021, the department defunded the environmental, one of their environmental health positions, and there was a transition with some of the work now being performed by development services instead of the health department. But conditions have changed whereby the department notes that they need some additional help to remain up to date on the inspections, particularly those in Bullhead City and Havasu. So adding back this position would be about $71,000 that would be charged to the environmental health fund, and those... That would be charged to the environmental health fund, and those that is funded by the fees that come in to that fund, and would put them back to where they were in 2021. Then the senior nutrition budget just includes replacing, this is a standard replacement of vehicles. In this case, there are two vans that are used in the Golden Shores area, and they're experiencing, they're becoming unreliable, experiencing a lot of maintenance and extensive repairs. And I should say expensive repairs, so that is included. Moving on to the emergency management department. To me, you know, kind of going through all of this, this is one of the more exciting departments this year. And I'm not just saying that because I failed some emergency management test or something, but the items that they're discussing here are, I think, very valuable from a county service standpoint, not from a department standpoint. They would like to secure the money from a grant to link, have a link communication between the Bureau of Reclamation at Hoover Dam and then the first responder agencies along the Colorado River area. They've noted specifically that it would fill the critical gap in the interoperable communications that's needed and vital to the area. And in listening to that and reading that a couple of times, like, wow, yeah, that's a very big deal, and it's not a lot of money, and again, sourced to the Homeland Security Grant.
So is the grant costing us 21 grand?
So the grant, we would receive $21,000.
The way it's worded, it looks different.
Well.
It looks like a cost that, and.
It does, doesn't it?
Looks like we're paying 21 grand to get a grant.
In this case, you'll have to read my mind, and not the way I worded it. I apologize for that. Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. So the linking of the communication between the Bureau of Reclamation and Hoover Dam and first responder agencies, is that connected to what is happening along the river at all? Like with the update of communications? Because I know that all of the first responders, the city, the fire districts are connecting up with new equipment. Is this part of that?
Supervisor Angus, it's not, it's complimentary to what you're talking about. There is an upgrade going on. We're working with all the first responder agencies on a continual basis to determine whether there are gaps in our radio coverage and our interoperable coverage throughout the county as well as along the river. This particular initiative came as a result of a program, essentially a committee that was put together at the instigation of emergency management coordinator Mike Browning, working with federal homeland security and the Bureau of Reclamation, as well as the counties, as well as Clark County and San Bernardino County and the state emergency management agencies, to look at a mechanism for which if we had something happen to the dams, we could have a better initial notification to the counties and the first responder agencies, and not only have that emergency, improved initial notification, but continual communication among the agencies as the event develops. And as it turned out, as part of that committee and that workshop that came as a result of that, it was determined that there was a real need to fill that communication gap. Bureau of Reclamation really didn't have the capability to be able to talk to our first responder agencies. And so this will take care of that. We have, we did apply for this grant through the State Homeland Security Grant Program through our regional advisory council, and there was money allocated, the 21,000 was allocated for that, through that council.
Thank you.
The information technology and communications department, as you may recall, were consolidated together, and 2023 includes the phase two of their two-year reorganization then. They would be adding a systems analyst and a software developer, and that would be an increase of the four positions over the last two years. Their capital plan amounts to about $215,000. I've listed the items that they have identified that are ready for replacing and upgrading. They do have network switches there routinely. This year would be in some of the remote sites in Havasu, Bullhead, and Colorado City. Economic development includes an initiative for about $32,000 for research software that would allow the department to research and obtain information that's not otherwise readily available or easy to grab from one source. So that would include information such as business traffic, business activity, demographic information, healthcare information, and a lot of features like that that are crucial for the department to carry out the, some of those functions that, the role of economic Development Services includes a lot of job series creation, so they did several last year and have found that to be rewarding for the employees in allowing the recognition that when they obtain certification and the years of experience, and they are able to move up a range or the appropriate range. And so they would like to add a planner series, the permit technician, and the zoning inspector to those series, as well as their engineering technicians. The cost for advancement at this point in time are really budget neutral, as they would only occur when the employees achieve those milestones, and it's currently projected to be offset by the department revenue. Not the department of revenue, the department revenue. They would also like to add an additional permit technician senior position, although it's contingent upon the department hitting at least 300, or an average of 300, building permits, or more than 100 septic permits to be issued before they would fill that position. And the initiative, again, is intended to be budget neutral with costs offset duly by the department revenue and then by the split funding with their environmental quality That division or the department also has a series of reclassification requests. These are mostly aligned, or the purpose of these requests are to align positions with each other and be comparable to other department officials that have similar responsibilities. So this would include reclassifying the building inspector series positions and the plans examiner to be equal to each other. And it would move a plans examiner senior position and a building inspector senior position and a zoning inspector senior position to supervisory positions, as those positions are responsible for supervising the staff. And the chief building official would end up being aligned then with other management roles in the department and move from a range 25 to 26. Their other outside of personnel, then their budget includes installing bulletproof barriers in the first and second floor lobbies with, excuse me, the cost shared amongst the divisions. And then their automation budget, which is funded as a piece of the fees that are paid by applicants, that the automation budget would add funds to hire a consultant that would complete the analysis and the reengineering of the submittal process to improve the wait time and increase the efficiencies of the department. And hopefully I have captured the essence of that. Is this the final stage? Would that be the final stage of that, or is there? Oh, you're hoping, okay, fingers crossed. This would be the final implementation of the functionality that Acela provides.
So we're putting up bulletproof glass?
Why?
Come on down and tell me about the bulletproof glass.
Good morning, Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, and those on the phone. With COVID, we implemented the sneeze shield, the sneeze guards, and put those up throughout the building. Basically, what this would do is replace those sneeze guards with bulletproof glass, basically providing a safer protection for our employees and those in the building. I don't know, given the atmosphere that's out there, number of mass shootings and that, there are a number of facilities within the county that do have already bulletproof glass. Development Services handles quite a bit of cash, the idea being to protect our employees.
Any questions? Supervisor Angus.
So you said, I didn't realize that it's already done around the rest of the county.
And I wouldn't say it's throughout the county. I said there are a number of places, typically those that handle money, I believe, have bulletproof glass in place already.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould and Supervisor Johnson, I think primarily really two reasons. One is there is cash involved and being handled, and the other, there are situations volatile in nature where threats are made and folks are upset, where we've had, we have a policy in place to contact the appropriate enforcement as needed. So this truly is an added measure. Cost is insignificant compared to the benefits that we get from it, and the fact that it is not the first building in the county that would receive this. There are others. We think it provides a level of safety to those employees that are otherwise just out there, exposed. So we bring it forward, or we bring it forth to you with that understanding.
It's just kind of a sad statement in general.
I don't disagree.
That we have to put our folks behind bulletproof glass because of the potential threats to them.
Chairman Gould, I don't know if I was dreaming this, but I think I remember that when I was running for office, that the third floor, the former county manager installed bulletproof drywall up there. Am I dreaming that? Okay. Not windows, I just remember bulletproof drywall.
We have not changed any drywall in the timeframe.
Not, not him, before. That was the last year of the.
Not that I remember.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, just for the record, I feel pretty safe upstairs and I don't need any bulletproof vest.
We could break up that window in your office if you're feeling invulnerable.
Yep, and it's not the end of the day yet. Speaking from experience. The capital plan in the environmental quality group includes, oh my, oh wow, do I read all of this? But engineering for several projects, and the first one that's listed is direct relationship to the APP permit, the APP and the Title V air quality permit. They do have $50,000 appropriated for an automated way and payment system at the Surbat landfill that people would be able to use the kiosk instead of waiting for the person, and that is intended to reduce the wait times and the traffic back up there. They have about $500,000 in there to design the drying beds at Mahavi landfill and a potential gas system at Surbat. There is another couple hundred thousand dollars allocated for phase one of the drainage channel at the Mahavi Valley landfill, and then $2.5 million to begin the construction for that. They also need to add some area in their, in the development services building for their records archives. And then, as always, they appropriate for property acquisition to expand the landfills.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
And this comes from the landfill fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
For flood control, they have about 3.3 million in capital plans, which includes the continuance of the Grace Neal Channel in North Kingman, and then some other potential projects. It includes a weather base station and weather equipment at Beaver Dam, and weather equipment in some other locations. It does include the design of infiltration basins within the Kingman area, and I know you're all aware of the work that they've been performing in that area. And then it is anticipated, we've got a million dollars in from the federal congressionally-directed spending appropriations for the Bank Street Channel Stormwater project. And that may be almost as important as Byron's. So that really summarized Development Services. I hope I hit all the main items. Our meetings with Development Services and Public Works, they're the huge divisions, they're very long. I think we spent maybe six hours with Public Works this year just on their items, so I'm, I've been up here not quite an hour yet, so I'll just march right on through some of it and not necessarily read everything that I've got in here, but you understand the overall, what Public Works does with their replacement equipment and whatnot. From the personnel standpoint, though, they would also like to add a series, a job series for their road maintenance group. And they're also requesting to fill four of their vacant roads maintenance positions that have been held vacant for many years. So we actually budget those each year, so from a budget perspective, it's budget neutral. But the actual cost of operations is, the impact is estimated to be about $234,000 because we would actually be paying for additional people rather than having that roll over in the fund balance each year. The department notes that the staff, the additional staff, would allow them to have more flexibility and opportunity to provide maintenance, haul the material that is needed nearly year-round instead of less time that they currently can do. And the count, it would increase the road maintenance workers from, for two positions, 22 to 24 positions, and then the senior positions from 12 to 14. So in total, you're looking at 36 positions in the roads maintenance area if this is From their equipment standpoint, I really hate to read all of this, but these are always some items. I don't want you to get caught, you know, sideways, not knowing what's in here. There are photos included in the, some of the pages in the budgets of what each of these pieces of equipment are. Didn't, I didn't throw this up on the screen, although I considered it. But they have a walk behind saw in there that would be able to be utilized for repairs on the sidewalk and the asphalt. They have new radios. They're replacing four motor graders, three vehicles, four water trucks, one 15-yard dump truck, and then a road broom. They also, I know you can read, but they also have on there a hot oil tanker, a tank trailer. They would like to purchase two auto flaggers, which are actually equipment that can be located at each end of a section for traffic control, that they would use then as markers when they're performing crack sealing and patching. And other items as well, but certainly that in that area. They have a road widener attachment that could be mounted on a loader, and then they could use the. could use the loader to also repair the road shoulders and pathway areas. They would like to purchase a water truck to use up in the Arizona Strip area, and then there's a proposal for two super dumps, which would be used to haul the material. Currently, the department has other dumps. They're noting that the super dumps can haul as much material as a belly dump trailer and twice as much as an end dump, and that these equipment are easier to operate and maneuver while still allowing the same or exceptional hauling capacity. So those are, you know, different as compared to the way that we're currently operating. In their engineering division, they would also like to create advancement series for the engineers, surveyors, and the technicians, and they would like to reclassify the registered surveyor, who's currently in a range 16 to a 19, and provide a market adjustment for the civil engineer unregistered position. So we've got that plugged in and accounted for. The request for these changes are due to, obviously, their increased workloads. As you know, they've had an incredible difficulty recruiting and retaining qualified applicants for, in these specific career fields.
Anything.
The economy, we are all, all the local governments, we're all in the same mode right now. We have four years essentially to have our elected officials work through commitments of the federal monies to help improve projects in our, each of our local communities. Each of those are requiring engineers, whether we employ those engineers, technicians, surveyors, or whether we outsource. So we're competing, you know, specifically in all areas for the same group of people with a lesser volume, a lesser number of available applicants. And then, of course, they have the routine computer equipment and replacement items. The engineering projects, I hope I got this correct, it's about $3 million. They have in there some grant match funding for improvements on Northern Avenue from Stockton Hill Road to Castle Rock in the Kingman area. In the Mojave Valley area, they have the Mountain View Road, Camp Mojave Road to Aztec and Sterling to Gardner plugged in, with this hopefully being Mojave County's match portion. And then they would be applying for other grants and looking at other sources. The Alamo Road hard surfacing is in there at 1.2 million. They have capital preservation that's annual, and at 500,000, and then, of course, right-of-way acquisitions, so. I don't know if you have any questions on any of that, but I believe I picked all of those up correctly. Okay, thank you. In traffic control, then we'll move on to the other divisions. Traffic control also includes moving the positions into a series, and then they want to purchase a container to hold their various equipment, their materials that they use for their sign department. And the equipment maintenance division also includes establishing a series, a job series for the equipment mechanics. I could just say that every division includes these job series. It includes replacing a mechanic's truck and purchasing the other equipment. This information is located on their, their plans. They do a five-year plan and then move these items forward as they become affordable and available and needed. Their fleet division, in addition to the series, includes a similar, where they're moving forward on their next year of their five-year plan. It would include a ground lift equipment in the Kingman shop. I guess the point in that I would like to make sure that we mention here, both in the Fleet Services and in the Vehicle Use Fund, as you know, prices have escalated dramatically. So the proposal right now is to move the Fleet Services rate per mile from 33 cents per mile to 40 cents per mile. Steve and his group have done a fantastic job up to this point of managing those funds. As you're aware, there have been years, including the current year, where we've taken some of those monies and moved them over to capital projects over the years, and one year, we brought it back to the general fund several years ago. But they've done a remarkable job getting this balanced. However, I think that their most recent calculation could be all the way up to 42 cents, potentially, or higher. Okay, so we are, we, being not just their department, but now finance has joined in, we're trying to do some analysis that will be forthcoming in our methodology for, for rolling out these rates, and then making sure that we've got...
So you're going to roll out the finance crystal ball and predict fuel prices?
Yes.
This is the rate that we charge the departments for the use of vehicles internally?
Correct. And just so you know, I'm not sure that you do know or not, but just so you do know, other governments also, from time to time, utilize our fuel, and then we charge them directly for that. So in the event that one of the cities pumped at our station, then we charge out the fuel to those agencies. Game and Fish sometimes uses our fuel, and I think even DPS will from time to time. So they provide this internally, and then we also have a few external customers. And I know from my years at Kingman, Kingman had IGAs similar with the county and some of the other law enforcement and fire departments, that in the event that their normal fueling stations are down, that they can come and purchase fuel at a local government, and it works out pretty well that way. And likewise, Mojave County has some IGAs with other agencies.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, to follow up on that, and as an example, we have similar agreement with the state, and specifically ADOT, where we can fill up at ADOT stations. And just so you know, as a matter of fact, when I travel outside of Mojave County, I find, I seek those, find them, I happen to know mostly where they are, and I go fill up there because it's a lot cheaper to fill up at a public system pumping station than it is otherwise. So it's mutual, it works for all, and what this does establishes the rates with which we will bill them when they do use our pumps.
Didn't we just get shut out of those fueling stations recently?
We did with the, we did, Chairman, with the Voyager card. ADOT went to a different system called WAX.
Okay.
And we can certainly participate in that. In fact, I just found out literally last week, when I was in Phoenix for the county managers' meeting, that the Voyager card does not work. So we are working on to get the WAX cards for those that use them and need them, so. But it really, especially in this volatile gasoline pricing market, it truly is worthwhile to stop and get it at a, at a public system pump.
Sure. Is this where we address the reimbursement for the employees' use of their own vehicles, or is that somewhere else in the budget?
The, oh, you mean when an employee drives their own vehicle?
Right, right. We reimburse them for their work use of their own personal vehicle.
Right, so we, so in the event that an employee is driving their own vehicle for work, then we use the IRS rate.
Okay.
And that's just part of the policy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, while that is what we do to reimburse, we highly discourage that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we looking at increasing our rates on our loan outs? Like, I know on the Sheriff's Department, we do $10 an hour for a patrol car, which I think's off below anyway, and then we do boat at $25 an hour. Are we looking at increasing the cost of those to people who want to rent them due to the cost of gasoline?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Johnson, so I checked with Judy to see, I remember her recently talking about that, and it is on our list of working with the Sheriff's Office to update, go back and update those rates. We do not have it completed at this time. But I appreciate you reminding us. Absolutely.
I wonder if the federal government's going to reassess their reimbursement rate in the next budget year?
They do each year, and in fact, one of the years when there was a previous spike, I don't remember what year that was, maybe 2016 or 17, they did a mid-year adjustment even, and then they brought it back down when the, the rates lowered. So they do every year. It's based upon the federal fiscal year, I believe, and we go in and, or maybe it's January. Is it January? Yeah, okay.
So it's normally once a year, but every once in a while, they throw in a wild card?
They do, yeah.
Thank you.
So in the Vehicle Use Fund, just on Monday, the board gave the department approval to go ahead and move forward with ordering the FY20, some of the FY23 vehicles, they will be received and paid for in '23, but that work to order those now, instead of some point during the year, is now underway. The, the increase, if the Sheriff's initiatives are approved, there would be four additional vehicles that we would need to increase with what was approved on Monday, and clearly the reentry program, I'm not sure what type of vehicle that would entail, that would be another one, if that needs to be in a similar vein with the Sheriff's vehicles. And again, as mentioned, we are, have inquired, Public Works staff has worked on it, so in tandem, we're working on looking at the amortization rates for the vehicles. Typically, these were depreciated over, for the most part, over a five-year or a six-year window, and we were using the rates we were paying for these vehicles. So if we bought a vehicle for $60,000 three years ago, we would amortize the $60,000 over the next five or six years and recoup that. But if the vehicles that were $60,000 are now $80,000, then that is not going to work. And I also want to thank the Sheriff's Office for even, for bringing it up and saying, you know, we have concerns that this isn't going to be sufficient if there's a $10,000 or a $20,000 deficit between now and the time that we have to replace this, that they wouldn't mind working with us to look into that as well. So we may have budget amendments before we get to the final, or even throughout the year, as we learn a little bit more about that and see if the pricing stabilizes.
With inflation's running at ridiculous levels right now, it's kind of hard to forecast that, so I would assume we're going to have to come back and make adjustments as we go through the budget year.
As we go, yeah. And it may end up being...
Unless you can get that crystal ball to work.
Very unlikely, very unlikely. In the facilities area, in addition to the job series requests, they have some market adjustments plugged into their financial information. It'll include a market adjustment for the engineering manager there and for a grounds worker senior position, and that would bring the compensation similar, to similar pay as it is in other positions, other equal positions or like positions. They also have their standard equipment replacement and have included a $1.8 million facility plan for next year that's identified, again, in their five-year plan. The largest item to note there for you this year was about $400,000. Again, this goes back to the juvenile detention center improvements, where they would replace the door and the lighting control systems.
So it's the door control systems?
Door control systems, yes. In the jail major maintenance area, fortunately, a lot less emergent and expensive need for next year. They've got some HVAC improvements with their energy management system that they would like to install. This, this upgrade should result in energy savings, and they can also measure those savings over a window of time and report that information back. Their capital budget then includes a solids interceptor to their sewer system. And we do have problems occasionally with the sewer itself there for obvious reasons, maybe I shouldn't say obvious reasons, but for conditions that can occur at that type of facility. So that, that is definitely an improvement that is needed at this time and would help facilitate the proper working order of the sewer system. For their water divisions, they've noted, again, job series, market adjustments for the water operators that have a lot of knowledge now and skill in operating these systems, similar to the other departments, where they have certification, particularly certification attached to training and requirements to operate those. The cities and then private businesses operate water utilities, and we're all vying for the same employees, and particularly those with, that have achieved the various levels of certification. It too includes a market adjustment for the engineering manager of the water divisions, and includes a reclassification and a retitle of the position that they currently have as their ID supervisor, would go from a range 17 to a 19, and would be renamed an operations manager. Their other equipment expenses are routine according to their capital plans. They do have a continued upgrade of the SCADA systems. At GVID, you know, just for note, that it includes the monies for steel plates that do the temporary cover over the excavation holes that are made when they're doing the utility work. And at I-40, they included a truck-mounted crane and variable frequency drive conversions for wells 5 and 10, and then they also need to do some electrical upgrades. In the Parks Division, similar to the other divisions, they do have a budget-neutral initiative to go into the series for their grounds worker. And again, there would be performance measures in place, benchmarks, as those employees achieve those milestones, that they would be able to move to the next level. It does include a reclassification of the Parks Planner position from a 15 to a 17, and a market adjustment for that person, and a reclassification of the Walupi Mountain Park Ranger from range 14 to a range 16 Assistant Park Superintendent position. Walupi Mountain Park, so these are kind of fun, right, to go through. The Walupi Mountain Park has several grant opportunities to make improvements at the park. It includes a 10% match for an Arizona Parks Grant to, for a new RV park. So this would be the second RV park, they are, I think we're all probably familiar with the first one, this would be another RV park. There is an opportunity to have a preservation grant, in which case Mojave County would have to provide 40% of a match to do a survey that is necessary to achieve the designation as a National Historic District for developed areas of the park. They also would like to pursue a grant with a... They also would like to pursue a grant with a 50-50 match. Again, these are from park fees, not the general fund, but from park fees to proceed with phase one, if you will, of a proposed bike park in the area. And I know that the department has brought before the board on previous occasions, opportunities to invite and host various bike festivities and competitions there. They have about $172,000 in capital expenses. Maybe the most notable is the drilling and equipping of a new well that was identified in their hydrogeologic study. At Davis Camp, they have monies designated to do the engineering for the shoreline restoration and phase five of the waterline design and then replacing a couple of their standard equipment that they utilize in the park. And at the community parks, it includes playground equipment at Mount Tipton. And then the community outreach phase that also includes design of a bike park at Neil Butler. For fairgrounds operations, they would like to proceed with purchasing a used water truck. And then just a note, we included this in the message, that right now, we're uncertain about the, whether or not the fairgrounds is going to break even. Clearly, for the current year, it's unlikely. But in 2023, we don't know yet really the cost of operating and running the annual county fair and ensuring that venue revenue, ticket sales, and all of the items combined will be enough. So just a heads up, from a budget perspective, they're in the red. From an actual perspective, we're hoping that they will be able to clear. If not next year, shortly thereafter. And it does include receiving funds from the state of Arizona. And state of Arizona ARPA funds would also complement the fairgrounds. And with E-RACE, the only item that they had this year was the replacement of their vehicle, one of the vehicles. Moving along, we're getting really close to the end here. The animal shelter includes joining the job series program. It would retitle the transport coordinator to a technician and join the series. And then they would also like to eliminate really the temporary trades positions and make them part-time animal control technicians. There is an additional item that once the new shelter opens or when it's nearing completion, that the department envisions adding two part-time technicians at this point. And that cost of all of this would roll up to about $142,000 in total. And moving on to the library district, the TV district. The library district, give you a little bit more information for these two tax districts. They are both structurally balanced where revenue supports the cost right now. The current tax rate for the library is .2548. They do have an operating fund balance projected at about $5 million, both for the current year and next year. And the building fund should have about $2.2 million. Their initiatives really are strongly reclassification. They've been working with HR for quite some time now. There was a reclassification approved last year for moving the bottom of the range to a 6, up from a range 4 or 5. And then the other items that we've listed there, moving the support services aide from 8 to 10, the seniors from 10 to 11, youth services positions, 14 to 17. The reason I'm reading these out loud is to make sure I have it on the record so that if there's any confusion later, then it's clear that we have it as to what we were expecting and anticipating. The support service supervisor, 16 to 18, and the library services managers from 20 to 22. So this really encompasses almost their entire staff and has been worked on a long time and much needed to get them aligned with the proper pay. They also have a few market increases for designated positions. Again, this is based on the HR analysis and takes into consideration their additional education, experience, training, knowledge, and those types of activities that you would compare to. They do have a proposal to reduce the bookmobile program costs. And they've been saving money since really the start of the pandemic. They put to rest the bus and needed to use a van in order to provide these services. And it's been working. It's been fairly well-received. When they were using the bus, there were patrons that were actually coming onto the bus and using the bus, so to speak, as a library. They've been able to bring the books in a van instead, which is a lot more efficient to operate and still provide a service, whether that entails bringing those books into their facility instead of them into our bus, as well as continuing a similar outreach to the outlined communities. The cost savings are close to $50,000 a year just with this revision. So there's definitely a request to approve this and a positive, here's a positive thing that came out of this pandemic. Their capital includes replacing two minivans and then moving forward with their annual fire protection and HVAC replacement program. Moving on to the TV district. They, the TV district is projected to end the year with about $1,005,000. And again, we would recommend that we maintain the current tax rate of just less than 6 cents. It's at .0563. That rate was reduced in '22. We're carrying over $200,000 in their capital appropriation, which was noted as funds available for the possible expansion of the coverage area. But most of the other items for this are, in general, as you're familiar with. And now we really are nearing the very end. The general fund balance is projected to be, including all these initiatives and items, would be about $37 million. That does approximate about three months of working capital. And it also gives the board $8.8 million in contingency, which is amazing and a great place for you to be in making decisions going forward, particularly if you're looking at potential, I don't want to dwell on economic downturn, but in the event that that occurs or one of the other items that we know that we're at risk. I don't, I don't really think I need to give you the lecture about the other information. We've talked about that a lot. There are risks that are very specific to Mojave County as we've already talked about the fuel vehicles. Security contract came up. You've had a discussion at that at the board level. There can be some additional changes that will be forthcoming with that. The threats to technology and the cybersecurity for the county, tax settlements, we still have some of those looming. Mandates, the state budget, the impacts that come from that. We've tried to include preliminarily those items that we knew about, such as the increase to access and some other factors. But depending on how that goes, it's important to have the fund balance that you can continue to provide service and respond to emergent needs or opportunities that can benefit the county, the citizens. And then also, you've got natural resource concerns going on at the same time. So those are the risks that, you know, that I would advise that you keep that in mind with the decisions that you make. So in summary, I did a four-year outlook for you. It does include really five years, including '23, and then another four years. The budget, based upon what we've included and projected, does balance and it looks like it is sustainable. I would have, you know, by borrowing Chairman Gould's crystal ball, there's a lot of unknowns out there. But each year, it's very rewarding. It gives me chills to think about the progress that we've made as the county to become financially secure again and put you in a position as decision makers to not be painted into a corner and have to make a drastic decision one year at a time that you've got a cushion right now that will allow you to see out a few years in advance and be able to mitigate some of those challenges. So I put in your packet, and I'm throwing up, this is a lot of numbers, but it is, condenses a four-year projection. I guess the most important piece of that, I highlighted in yellow. I don't know what it turned out. It's probably just a gray line in the, about three-quarters of the way down the page where it has the net recurring revenue and expense. And in 2023, it shows that expenses, recurring revenue less recurring expenses, that we're going to clear right now, $1,005,000. So we are balanced to the good. I think this is the first time this has ever happened, at least to me. And this is important, I think, from the perspective of considering this. I'm not going to talk you to death about this. But remember, early on, when we talked about the revenue strategy, that's pretty conservative with us still underestimating as compared to the state budget. Even, even our predictions could be wrong. But we were at least $1,000,500 under. We have another $1,000,500. So you have, if we need to mitigate fuel pricing, vehicle pricing, some of the other risks that may come to fruition, the security contract. The crystal ball says that there's about to come before the board a new contract for the health care at the jail. And then that's going to be potentially, we put in an extra about $1 million into this budget for that. It might be more than that. It could be another million for that. So if those things come to fruition, we've tried to build this with the help of everyone, really to allow you to have the flexibility to take those on and not be upside down. And going forward, looking across then, well, I might add, this does include the local assistance funds coming in and carried over for the dollar increases that were provided. If those, if the amount that's finally received changes, then we have some wiggle room to work with that. I mean, I'm going to definitely cry about that, but it's not going to be the end of the world and that we have to undo everybody's pay because that didn't come to fruition. So going into '24, then with the projection, it shows that we would clear $2 million. Well, that would be as if we had the full funding for that and would carry that over into next year. And then in the future years, then we know Mojave County would have to absorb the costs of all that we've laid out. And then items that are going to come before you in '24, requested by all of us, all of the departments. And even in that case, that I'm predicting that, or projecting, I shouldn't predict, I'm just projecting, that we would break even at least without putting us in a hole or putting you in a bad position that you have to make critical decisions. So otherwise, I won't bore you with any of those other numbers. But I would just leave you with the facts that the general fund tax rate right now, what we're recommending that we continue is 52 cents below the maximum tax rate. And it has a value of about $12 million annually. It is 7 cents above the '23 truth in taxation rate, which is about $1.75, or it's going to be. And it is 8 cents less than the rate that was assessed in '21. We still have the full amount of the sales tax eligible as well if the Mojave County got into a dire predicament. And the board also has other opportunities that you could also look at other tax districts, such as, you know, public health district funded with either property or excise tax. Same with the jail. And you could also include a transportation tax. And there are other options. Those are just some of the few. And I'm not saying this is a pie in the sky budget, but based upon your management of the budget and your directives and the values, it has resulted in putting the county in a good position to begin the next several years. So in conclusion, I think I covered these points. I appreciate the trust that you all provide to me in getting you through this and the department's trust that I'm representing their priorities and initiatives as described. I do believe that this budget allows you some flexibility. And in terms of the timeline, the tentative budget is planned for adoption at the second meeting in June, which we've been doing now for many years. And then we are, I mean, ultimately, we would like to move that up so that final adoption is before the end of the fiscal year. But for current year, we're planning that for the second meeting in July. And then the final leg, the adoption of tax rates, would go to the second meeting in August. And that's the statutory date when all the districts have to provide their tax rates and information for you to accept and acknowledge and then adopt Mojave County's rates. So I conclude my comments with that. And I thank you very much for listening and being active with me and engaging with all of us to do the best that we can do.
Supervisor Angus.
Well, I want to thank you very much, Coral and your staff, for the fine work you do, not just for this, but all year round. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do a very good job of putting it all together. Good job. Hey, do you know what the dollar difference between the proposed rate and the truth in taxation rate is?
I do. It's about $1,004,000. If you do that, you'll wipe me out.
There's your cushion. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson, you have any questions?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Ready to conclude or?
Um, Sir Chairman.
Anyone want to make a pitch for their department budget?
No one had expressed any desire to do so. And the interest of time, let me echo what you heard from Coral and say, we're grateful for the opportunity to bring this in front of you. We truly believe it is, given the time that we're in and everything around us, we believe it's the best budget that we can assemble, bring in front of you. We do so with the understanding that we have to plan for today and the future. And so that's all we have. We stand ready and prepared to answer any follow-up questions that you may have. And we, we look forward to the final phase of this, of adopting a final budget that will carry us through next year, so.
The final phase and then the other final phase?
So to that end, we're very grateful. Thank you. And I don't have anything else. I think that takes care of what we wanted to accomplish today.
Questions for the county manager? Supervisor Johnson?
None, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Well, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn then.